Good evening, welcome to the February twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen meeting of the Miller's School Committee. I'll start by announcing that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at seven o'clock on Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel thirty-seven. I will start then with a roll call. To my left Denise.
Here.
Sean?
Here.
I'm here. Superintendent?
Here.
Steve?
Present.
Jen?
Present.
Student representatives?
Here.
Teacher representatives? Maybe, maybe. All right. We do have people signed in for open session and I am going to rearrange the agenda a bit and just move to new business, which is the status of the process of evaluating the air quality at Clyde Brown. Right now, I'm going to read an update, a statement of where we are. I'm also then going to invite our consultant from Sovereign Consulting to come and describe the testing process that has gone on and is going on over the past week. And then we will take any questions and answer them as best we can, which unfortunately is not going to be that great tonight. So, just as an update and overview, administrators from the Miller's Public Schools, school committee members, representatives from the Mass Department of Public Health, Mass Department of Environmental Protection, and Sovereign Consulting, an environmental engineering firm, have been working jointly since last Thursday, February eighteenth, to respond to the unfavorable results of air quality testing received last Wednesday, February seventeenth. Those results led to the closure of the Clyde Brown Elementary School Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of this week. Part of the work conducted during those three days involved additional testing and extensive inspection of the building to determine why air quality testing exceeded standard guidance levels. Although we've received some preliminary testing results, we won't have more conclusive information until tomorrow afternoon, Wednesday, February twenty-fourth. Once those results are received, we will work with DPH, DEP, and our consultant to conduct a risk assessment that will determine if and when the building can be reopened. We will communicate that decision as soon as it is available Wednesday, February twenty-fourth. As we've stated multiple times, we are extremely appreciative of the patience of the community and support from the community that we've gotten as we've had to get through this last week. So next, I'd like to invite Tom Hebner up to discuss the testing process. And as Tom's coming up, just as a frame of reference and he can give some guidance, Tom's been involved in other projects in Miller's. At that table there. Other projects in Miller's and is familiar with the town and minority, so. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Tom Hebner. I'm a licensed site professional with Sovereign Consulting. We're located in Foxborough, Massachusetts. And I'm also a professional engineer in the state and I've been in this field for about twenty-five years. I just wanted to provide an overview of what's been happening, happening at the school relative to the investigation and response actions. Initially, a couple of months ago, there was a concern about a leak in the roof in various places within the school. So, there were concerns that ceiling tiles were being impacted and there might have been mold that was being generated within the ceiling tiles, mold that was growing. So, there was concerns of odors also, which resulted in air testing that was done at the beginning of February. The air test came back at the beginning of school vacation and the results were above health-based guidelines. So, because of the requirements to notify DEP at the state, there was actually initial, immediate action from DEP to show up at the site. DEP has been out at the site last Thursday, last Friday, and also yesterday on Monday. Sovereign Consulting got involved in the project last Thursday. There was another consultant that was involved and they had finalized their air testing work on last Thursday. We were supposed to have that information back on Friday, as it turns out with glitches related to transporting the samples to the lab. The samples actually didn't become available until Sunday. On Friday, DEP showed up at the site with a mobile lab that had a gas chromatograph with a mass spectrometer. And in conjunction with DEP, Sovereign and DEP worked throughout the whole day to conduct visual and olfactory, which is smelling of various areas of the building. So you can smell a lot of things with your nose. There's another level of screening where you're actually screening with field instruments. So we had field instruments going all throughout the school. And we also, with the mobile lab, conducted air samples and the samples were run in the lab. There was about fifteen samples and DEP couldn't find any evidence of, you know, impact that was in the building. So, we really needed those lab results to wrap up, the end of the work on Friday. And as it turns out, the lab results weren't available until Sunday. The field inspections, usually if there's a problem in a building like this related to indoor air vapors, there's cracks in the foundation, there might be utility conduits where vapors are coming into the building, or there could be plumbing problems, we didn't find any evidence of intrusions of indoor air vapors. So, there was extensive conference calls because the results became available on Sunday morning and we had to put the information into a risk calculation to see what the results of the lab was. And during these conference calls, it became apparent that we needed more information. So, testing was conducted yesterday. There were four-hour tests that were conducted yesterday. And the interest was initially to conduct eight-hour tests, but we couldn't conduct eight-hour tests because we wanted eight-hour tests that correspond to the actual school day, which means that the school day is seven to three, but because it was Sunday, the labs are closed, we're talking about this on conference calls. So it was actually a conference call with about sixteen or seventeen people at four o'clock on Sunday afternoon. And we were not going to be able to do eight-hour air testing until Monday at twelve o'clock. So in the interest of getting more information and trying to move forward with this process, we did four-hour testing on Monday and then planned for doing eight-hour testing today, which actually started at seven o'clock today. I was at the school at six o'clock this morning. So, we have various levels of information that's coming in and this information from today's testing will not be available until tomorrow, possibly during the afternoon at some point. I wanted to talk about the process with the lab because typical turnaround time for a laboratory is seven to ten days. In this case, because of the urgency associated with the school, all of these lab tests are being done on a twenty-four-hour turn, in some cases even faster. If you listen to the timeline, the first air test was actually conducted on February fourth. And because of the unknown nature of the results, you don't really know what the results are until you get them, the results didn't come back until school vacation week because that's seven to ten business days on the turnaround. So at this point in time, since this process started last week and DEP got involved and also Department of Public Health, it's been the actual, it's been the absolute highest level of commitment to trying to work through this process. And that's why the samples are being run so fast. But even in that case, we still have to wait for the results. The results from today are not going to be available until tomorrow. I also wanted to talk about some of the variations that can occur with environmental sampling events. Groundwater, there's various types of media that you can sample. There's groundwater, there's soil, and there's also air. Groundwater is pretty consistent because you're pulling it out of a monitoring well. Soil can be very variable because of the heterogeneous nature of soil. Air is also in that same category. So, conditions like humidity, temperature, and pressure can really influence air samples. So, to get consistent air samples, you really need to consistently sample over a period of time to make sure that you're catching all of the conditions. At this point in time, you know, we're moving in the right direction, but I just wanted to emphasize that everyone involved in this process has been committed to finding a solution that ensures a safe building for the children, teachers, and all of the site workers at Clyde Brown.
And just-
Were there any questions?
No. Okay. Now, and like I said, and Tom mentioned, I will say between Tom's responsiveness of being looped in and the responsiveness we've had with DEP and DPH, we are, while it's at times frustrating and tedious, we're literally getting results and tests every single day. And it's just, this is the process that we have to go through. We had the DEP mobile lab out here within twenty-four hours of when we needed it. So, the state agencies have actually been really, really good about getting us in and moving the process as fast as we can. So, I will open the floor to anybody from the community who wants to come up and ask a question. You're more than welcome to.
Any questions?
Yep.
So, one of the things that I think we've all had-
Can you come on up just because-
Most of, we've all had questions about is, is that, because as you can imagine, when there's little information provided, there are tremendous rumors that fly around any town. So one of the questions that I think people have, is this something that has potentially happened recently, or is this something that our children have been exposed to for years? Like, is this something that my now-seventh grader spent five years at that school exposed to? Is this something that has happened in the last three weeks? Because, you know, people are saying, "Oh, the boiler was cleaned," and that has created a problem. And then there's people saying that this is the same thing that was at the library. We all know what happened at the old library. So, you know, I think that some of that information, we all have a lot of concerns about the health of our children, and I think it's important that information be provided.
So, right now, we don't know. We do, we don't know the source.
So, and my understanding is there is not any air quality testing that's been done in any timeframe that any of us are aware of, so?
I know that there was, two thousand and nine was the last, the last one that was done prior to this. But we don't, we don't know what the source of the result, the initial result was. Yeah.
Two thousand and nine. Seven years ago. Social Board, two forty-seven Pleasant Street. As a parent who works in a school system, I'm very aware of air quality and how difficult it is to take care of a school with the limited money you have. I'm losing work for this and I know you understand that. So is there a plan in place if you do not get a positive result tomorrow so I can plan my week, my friends? I got fourteen ten-year-olds coming over tomorrow so we can make this work for the community. And I know you understand that, and I know you understand what people are going through and appreciate it. But we need to know, if we get a no tomorrow, what are we gonna do? If you get a no on Friday, what are you gonna do? Because we can't keep saying to our friends, "Take my kid." What are we gonna do? I'm calling in sick. So I know you can do the best.
We have a plan. Ideally, we get good results tomorrow. If we don't or need additional testing, we absolutely have a plan that is effective on Friday. We are working on Thursday. There is no guarantee on Thursday. We're working towards that. If we get positive results and it's a best-case scenario, fantastic. If we have to expand the alternate plans, we're seeing if that's feasible or not. But as of Friday, we will have alternate arrangements.
So, with that being said, and I respect that, would it be possible to put that quick blurb on listserv so parents can at least say, "Maybe not Thursday, I should come up with some plans." Maybe, I mean, I think that's the type of stuff that needs to be shot out as often as possible.
So we just came up and concluded that-
Okay.
Thirty minutes ago.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So assuming is, we can get out of here, we can get that, the statement that I just read out and some information as to when we can get stuff out there.
And I have to say, I appreciate it too because I know you guys are the firing line, but not the problem. So, thank you.
Well, we sign up for it.
So, thank you for doing this. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Beth?
Mr. Chair, can we just address the routine testing of the air and what we're required and not required to do? Can we just talk about that for a moment?
Sure.
I don't know who should address that. I don't know if Tom needs to come back and maybe he can speak to that.
I thought we talked about it because we spoke about it at a meeting. So, we had asked what standards are around air quality testing, what the requirements are by the state. We asked the Department of Environmental Protection. We also asked the Department of Public Health in our meeting yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yesterday. On, there are no standards around air quality testing in school buildings. Testing for air quality in school buildings is event-driven. It is driven by either an event or odor detection, so there is some reason that would trigger the request for air quality testing. The school district of Miller's at Clyde Brown, our catalyst was the mold. We wanted to see if there were any issues as a result of the leaks in the roof at Clyde Brown. So for being event-driven, that was our event. We expanded the mold test to include air quality, and that's where we got the results that we received last week. And those results, because they were numbers-wise where they ended up, those triggered all of the communications to the Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Public Health. The last testing of air quality in two thousand and nine was performed by the same team that was here in the school last week into this week from the state. They were already very familiar with the building because they had been in it and around it in two thousand and nine. And we asked them and their response to us was, it is all event-driven. It was event-driven the last time that you did it. It was related to tiles and tiles coming off of the floor. So that was the event that drove the testing the last time, and then the mold was the event that drove the testing this time.
So, if it's event, Beth Kramer, if it's event-driven, why, there was leaks last year in my daughter's classroom and leaks the year prior too, why wasn't any testing done at that time?
There's no evidence, mold.
Yeah. They had to fix all the tiles on the ceiling. I mean, you would go in the room and you would smell the mold. So isn't that an event-driven source?
If we brought in mold testing and did it, and did the air testing?
Yeah, like, I'm asking, why wasn't it done? You said it has to be event-driven, a leak, you know, the tiles, whatever. This wasn't, this happened last year and the year prior too, in the same room.
In the last, in the prior years, we had focused on the mold only and detecting and clearing mold.
Yeah.
This year, it was a decision to just expand it out just to do the air because it was in there. There wasn't, there was no odor, there was no, this was like, literally it was, we have people in doing the testing, we might as well expand it just, just for the sake of expanding it. It wasn't, it wasn't as if when you test for mold, you have to do the air testing. That's, that what, it was more of a, we're gonna add on just to, just in case.
So was there mold testing done in that particular classroom last year and the year before?
And was it in room five?
I mean, that's my concern. My kids have spent all year in that classroom.
Yeah.
Well, why wasn't it done?
No. The Department of Public Health doesn't recommend air testing for mold. They just recommend if there is ceiling tiles that are stained, this is what they've explained to us, you replace the tiles and clean. You don't need to do the air testing. The mold samples that were taken, that came back are not the dangerous black mold. They're the common mold that grows on organic materials or wet surfaces. So, one of the things we've learned is, we probably didn't need to do the air testing. We just needed to clean the mold and replace the ceiling tiles. So air testing is not necessarily recommended even when you see visually the potential for mold. You just clean it.
And what more was the issue this year that caused the air quality testing?
There wasn't.
You were just being more comprehensive.
It's interesting because you said that someone verbally said, you know, "We smell mold." So you just wanted to do extra this year as opposed to other years?
When we pulled tiles, people were concerned that they saw mold.
Right.
So we expected, and there was concern that it was mold, and we decided instead of just taking it and cleaning it as we've done in prior years, we would go ahead and take the extra step and test it because the concern was that we had these repeating leaks and the concern was, we've got the quote-unquote "black" or bad mold. So we said, okay, instead of just cleaning it and doing what we've done and all technically required to do, go test it just so we know whether we really have bad mold or not. We don't. It was the non-whatever, the same mold that's in. But then, so then we decided, okay, since we're having the mold tested, we've got these people in, we'll do the air just, just because, and then this checked.
So, and just one more quick question.
Yeah.
So what is, I mean, do we know long-term effects of these chemicals or whatever that are, what is it, TCE?
So, we are, once the results are all analyzed, we are going to hold, and actually have the Department of Public Health come and give a full form on the results, that they found the short, long-term implications of what was found.
Yeah.
Any kind of concerns of exposure, what kind of questions.
Right.
And so we're gonna do that and that'll be, we unfortunately, because of, one, the timing of getting the results and getting them analyzed, and also open meeting law requirements of posting and how long you have to do to post that.
Yeah.
We're looking at either probably Sunday or Monday to be able to have DPH out here and do that. And so once, once we have those results, we'll get that form so that we can have, we still quite honestly may not know what the existing source of the first test result was.
Yeah.
We'll be, at least be able to say, okay, we did a week of testing, here's where we are, and here's the effects of the chemical that was found in years.
It's just the, it's the unknown that's causing all the, oh my god, what's going on?
Right. And that's, and that's what we've been-
I have a headache, oh my god, do I have a brain tumor?
Right.
I'm not kidding.
And that's what we're, I, I know. And that's what we've been sitting with since last Wednesday night or Thursday night when we got the call that you got a problem.
Ms. Kramer, we know and appreciate your concern. We have kids in school, as you know.
I know, I know. I mean, this is like-
We live at work, we have the same exact concerns as you do.
Everyone.
And we're looking forward to learning more.
Yeah. Okay.
We're trying to get you the information as soon as we possibly can.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
So one more less intense question. What does this mean for the end of the year? No, seriously.
Seriously, we, that's part of what we are gonna need to work out of how many days we have that would potentially have to be made up and, and we are gonna need, we have already started but are looking at, are there ways to make up the days, whether it's half-days that aren't half-days, or what does it mean? And is there to be, is there a chance that we've got Clyde Brown going a day or two longer than the middle school, high school? Yes. But we don't, but we're trying to work that out and if we have to make up those days or not. But yeah, it's possible.
Yeah?
John Bor. Small Tom, I know everybody in the school community, I had to write them down. Was the, this time around, the testing that was done, there was a test that came back negative and a test that came back positive. Two thousand and nine, which test was done, was the same level of testing, both types of tests? Was it the two thousand and nine test, or do we know that the two thousand and nine test was not the first test that came back positive?
So the only difference between the two results that we got back on Sunday is that the labs who ran them were different.
The what?
The labs who processed them were different.
Okay.
It wasn't that there were different tests run. It was, we had two canisters sitting next to each other, relatively next to each other. One went to one lab and one went to the other. And the lab, one lab came back and said, "You're, it's well below," and the other lab said, "It's a little hot."
And I think, and the other question is a little different, but I think we've, I think, I know in my home, I've seen kind of an extensive amount of illness in my own children, which could be completely unrelated. But it's been a year where they've been very sick. Sometimes it's respiratory, I'm first grader complaining of headaches a lot, that could be related to a lot of different things, I understand that. But I guess the question is, does the nurse in the elementary school track, or is like the nurse visits and attendance tracked in any way at the elementary school? And have we seen or noticed a noticeable increase this year as opposed to previous years? Because I have in my own home, for whatever reason, but-
Absence is definitely-
Mr. Chair, we do track. We have extensive health records that every nurse visit is tracked and kept in a database and the attendance. And I will check with her, but I do know it's, I remember this last year too, it's flu season, there's a lot going on. She has not mentioned into, Mr. Phelps, I don't think she's, it hasn't been an unusual year in terms of anything that she's mentioned, but I'll certainly check tomorrow.
Thank you. Good evening. Peter Henning in Villa Street. I think my question might go more towards Tom, if that's all right.
Yeah.
Is it, and if I heard this correctly, the initial testing, the results took about seven to ten days to come back. The fact that you did the testing two days ago and yesterday, or today rather, you're trying to rush it twenty-four hours, could that consequently change the results of what's coming back, the readings?
No, it's a standard, it's a standard operation in the lab. There's a holding time associated with the samples. They go into the lab, but because the lab has such a large volume of samples, they basically do it first come, first served on the lab samples as they come in. So that's where you're gonna have a week, you could have seven to ten days of turnaround time on getting the results. In this case, because there's a premium charge associated with it, there's also a higher level of urgency associated with the information, they're putting it to the front of the line to turn it. There's still the process in the lab where, you know, they say it takes twenty-four hours, they're doing it in about seven or eight hours, but that's the normal process. But the samples are maintained for that period of time in attack. They're usually refrigerated. So the samples are refrigerated before they're taken out and then they're processed to do the actual analysis. So it doesn't, it doesn't impact the samples.
So they, yeah, so much.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Any other questions? All right.
Oh, oh. Hello. Paul Riley, one in Forest Spring Street. So I'm trying to gather some different information and perspectives and things online. One question that I've seen-
Hello. Paul Rowley, One Hundred and Four Spring Street. I'm trying to gather some different information and perspectives and things online. One question that I've seen recur on several occasions and I just, non-intensive questions, I'm just wondering for a response. People are suggesting that different facilities in town, in the interim that perhaps the Clyde Brown is unavailable, that perhaps the library or something else be used in place to somehow, um, like, bring kids there in order to continue the classroom, like the extended classroom where it might be available in other places. That could possibly contribute to less of like an impact at the end of the year. Is, is that possible in any way? Is that being conceived or is that part of like a larger vision of what may have to take place after this week?
No. So we've been working very hard and very diligently on finding the solutions and utilizing other buildings in town or out of town. Have been on the table and we're, have explored and are exploring getting all of those with, you know, we've been running this in multiple kind of tracks. The one track being get to the bottom of what's going on in Clyde Brown building. The second one being getting kids back into a safe environment as fast as possible. So, um, both of those have been happening, happening since this started and, and yeah, all of looking at other places is being explored. Any thoughts?
Julie Minarsky, Congress Street. I just, first of all, want to say thank you for everything you're doing. I can't imagine the pressure that you're under. I was just wondering if you could sort of explain your, the steps. I know you can't put days or a timeline on the steps, but could you sort of explain what you're thinking of as far as communicating information to the town so that there isn't rumors and stuff if you feel like the school is safe? So if you feel like you get the test results and you feel like the school is safe and we can open the school, can you tell us what you, what your plan is for disseminating information to the town before we have to send our kids back to school so that everybody's on the same page? And then if you get test results and you feel like the school isn't safe, what is your sort of plan of action in disseminating information and what you're going to do in that venue?
So, the plan of action would be in terms of what media and how we communicate in the short term of tomorrow night, and it will be just like we've done the last few days, which is a robocall, email, a listserv email blast, which goes to everybody who's subscribed on the listserv for three schools. We also have, uh, through Town Hall, the town administrator, they send an email out to anybody who's communicated. On Sunday night, we also utilized a couple of the TV stations. I think there was one that wouldn't, that didn't let us decipher between Clyde Brown and the middle school, high school. So they would only let us do like Milis, so we didn't use that station because we didn't want people thinking that everything was closed. So we'll continue to do that and, and like I said, the kind of longer term, if we can, if tomorrow we can send out a, the quick blurb of yes or no on Thursday and what the plan is, but then some longer communication about the test results, that'll go out in the same way, via email posted on our webpage. And then kind of the, the bigger conversation will be at the forum that we have either Sunday or Monday.
So you feel like if test results come back tomorrow, you would hold school, say that if test results come back okay, you would still hold school on Thursday and Friday and expect people to send their kids before having sort of a community discussion and having a question and answer time on Sunday?
So if we were to make that call that the building was open, it would only be because the test results that we've gotten back and all of the consultation with Sovereign Consulting, with the Mass Department of Public Health and the Mass Department of Environmental Protection said, we think the building is safe to open. And that's part of why, and, you know, we've been doing continual repeated tests to see that it works. So, would I expect that there would be people who would be hesitant? Yes. But with the, let's see. Jack's not. With the exception of one person, every one of us has at least one kid in Clyde Brown. And if we open the school, it would only be because our kids will be there that day.
I feel like, I mean, I can't, obviously, I just, if, if, I understand the timeline and not wanting to keep canceling school and there's people on one side of the fence and people on the other side of the fence. It would just be nice to be able to not have the rumors going around town and people feeling like, some people say, well, I have to send my kid and other people saying I wouldn't send my kid because I don't have all these questions answered because we didn't have this face-to-face interaction. So I appreciate you, you know, taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Quick questions?
Yeah.
One thing, the chemicals that were found, are those the reason, normally the result of mold? Or do we know that they're the result of usually other things that happen?
I'm gonna defer to Tom.
Um, TCE and TCE chlorinated solvents. TCE is perchloroethylene, tetrachloroethylene. TCE is trichloroethylene. They're related to degreases and cleaners most of the time.
And my other question is, I know there's a lot of testing being done, but there wasn't a mention of mold. Was, was any cleanup of the mold or other things going on during this time as well? Because I know there's still leaks and other issues to be addressed in the classrooms.
Yeah.
Tim Mcdaugh, Director of Operations. When the mold was identified, we've been going through and as Superintendent Gus has mentioned, we just pull tiles, we see a tile stain, it just disappears, it's maybe go away. Where it sits in the grid, we'll use bleach with water. I know people sit bleach in the school. It's the best thing to kill mold. So we're using bleach because we want to kill it and not just play with it and move it around and go away. So we just love to scrub and just take care of it. If we see it, we go after it and make it go away. That's what we've been doing. And I suspect that will continue until it gets repaired or we gotta, I mean, school or whatever is going to happen in the future over there. We'll just be buying lost ceiling tiles and fair amount of bleach and just labor and just keep right up with it until, you know, we get to a different place or a different school or what we're, we're gonna do with that.
Because I would assume, at least in the room, I know my daughters and you'd probably have to take a lot of the ceiling tiles down or pull the ceiling down to really see where the mold is because it's probably not just on the ceiling tiles. It's probably all in the back there.
The mold test that was done, without getting, going into a too hard, um, the majority of the mold that was found in the rooms was also found outside. So it wasn't like this rare type of thing that was created in this warm environment or something like that. There are two types of mold, the bad types, if you will. Both won't work. You have S, neither one, and report just two lines, there's nothing there, zero. And that was a huge leak to make, make sure that didn't exist. So, and as Karen said, explain to me, he said, look at that column to the right, it says where it is outside and most of the things that are inside are outside. My people would fit in there of it because it was kind of an induct and we're, we're moving the ceiling tiles, which is where the samples are actually taken from when they determine that. So we're just only going with tiles and moving them. And that seems to be doing a, a good, a good job. And one other thing that someone's probably thinking about, someone's have hit it now, we talk about degreasers. We don't use degreasers here that have that material in them.
So how do, how do those chemicals get in?
There is, well, I'd say correct on one, on one thing, there was some old pins, old pins. They're stainless steel cleaner. They don't use every day. It's like powder. We did have some, did have some before, I'm not going anymore. I thought it just can't be used very long time, but I just, just get it out, maybe go away. So we didn't, you know, worry about that. And actually, probably the last time that we used, it could have been years ago.
Right. And we still, we've seen and looked at a hundred different scenarios and over the last weekend, every scenario or every idea or every concept or suggestion of what it could have been has not panned out to be the reason. Which is probably one of the tougher parts is there's probably been three or four instances where we had, aha, maybe it's this. And it doesn't turn out to be that it is. So, whether it's stuff that got found that hasn't been used in years or, you know, concern about the top, like, the source for that level that was tested in the initial test had, we haven't found it and haven't even been able to duplicate the results that we got. So.
Where in the building was it found?
It was.
Maybe you could have Tom say.
Yeah, Tom, you want to address?
Sure. You know, um, the initial results were the main, the main office, the gym and gym storage area. It was three samples that were taken on February fourth.
Were any of the classrooms? Was that the only place that the samples were?
As we went on in the testing, there has been testing in the classrooms, but we didn't have any impacts in the classrooms.
Any other questions? Thank you, everybody, for coming out. We will continue to move information as fast as we possibly can. But we also will only communicate factual, concrete information. And I would ask that as much as it's difficult to ignore rumors, that anything you hear or see that doesn't come from the school is not factually correct because no one else is involved in the process other than our consultants, the state agencies, and the school administrator. So, uh, we will get you stuff as fast as humanly possible. Thank you all very much. So we will now move to, we have a couple of action items, which students, oh, sorry, student reps, why don't you guys go ahead?
There you go. The sophomores have been given an opportunity to take the PSAT tens on Saturday, February twenty-seventh. Also that same night on the twenty-seventh, there's a cabaret night, which is a cooperation of the band chorus concert at the school at seven PM.
Yep. Um, in addition to that, March second, this classic book fair is coming to the middle school and high school. We're gonna have it for year in the library. And March fifth is the SAT date for March and it's the first test date where the new test is being administered. While Milis isn't a testing center for this date, a lot of our students will be taking it at surrounding high schools. And finally, National Honor Society's applications have been administered to juniors and these will be reviewed by the faculty council as the next step for selection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we'll move to our action items. Consideration to approve the meeting minutes from February second.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dorie.
I make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from February second, twenty sixteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We next have consideration to recycle equipment. There's a memo in here, non-functional equipment.
Mr. Chair, the, we have fifteen printers that are seven to eight years old. Fifty-four, um, very old laptops that we've stripped every usable part off of to repair our current laptops. And those laptops are between ten and fourteen years old, plus they've been stripped of all usable parts. And then thirty-three desktop computers that we've also used for parts that we will donate. And if donate or dispose of, depending if we can donate them somewhere, we will. But we need to vote the release of this equipment that is no longer functional.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kavala.
I make a motion to recycle or dispose of non-functional technology equipment. Fifteen printers that no longer function, fifty-four laptops that have been stripped of all usable parts, and thirty-three, um, old desktops that no longer work.
Second.
It moves in seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Closes our action items. Superintendent's report with February enrollment.
Mr. Chair, your enrollment is included. We had one, um, increase in the middle school. So enrollment is up by one student that moved in and at Clyde Brown, one student moved in.
Chairman's report, I think we've covered. It's on my agenda. Subcommittee reports. Do we have any update from the elementary school building committee?
Well, the next, the most recent major milestone for the Clyde Brown project was the submission of the preliminary design plan, the PDP. That was submitted by Tapepey Architects, the architect that was selected and Compass Project Management last Friday, the night, whatever the nineteenth was, I believe it was last Friday. That goes to the MSBA for their review. The process now moves to back and forth questions and answers from the MSBA back to the architect and to the project management firm. And, uh, we will provide updates on that process and how that goes. But the PDP includes sites that were selected as options, um, different renovation-only options, additional renovation options, and new building options. I believe there were twelve options in total. There were five, four that were moved on as recommended for the MSBA to review. And when, when the, uh, at, at some future date, we'll be reviewing all of those with the PDP as well.
We did a little new business. We don't have executive session. School committee announcements. Denise?
I don't have any.
Sure.
No, thank you.
Steve?
No.
Ken? All right. So we are going to adjourn to working session, uh, to discuss the FY seventeen, uh, budget going forward. So, uh, we will be adjourning to the working session off camera and will not be returning on camera tonight. The next scheduled meeting for our committee is March eighth. But again, we will be communicating all information regarding Clyde Brown through, uh, the email listserv, website posting, and telephone when necessary, which will include when we have a, a date for the public forum to have Department of Public Health come and speak to all of the results we've garnered to date. So, uh, thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Night.